Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the October 10th, 2022 Fisher City Council meeting. A couple notes on our agenda, number, items number eight and 17 need to be removed from, is that correct, Chris? Eight and 17.
That's correct.
Okay.
It was just a timing issue with the EDC meetings will be brought back in November.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to council committee reports. John, would you like to give the finance committee report, please?
Sure, finance committee met last Wednesday and recommended the following items to be presented to the council for consideration this evening. Item seven B on the consent agenda, item 10, item 11, item 13, item 14, item 15, item 17, and item 19 on the agenda we've asked to bring forward as a committee for the council for to consider for tonight's meeting.
All right, thank you very much, John. Moving on to item six, it's the health department report. As always, every month, we, we have an update on our website with the health department updates. So you're welcome to click that link and read more about it. Moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'm going to abstain, however, from item C, Jennifer, because I wasn't present for that, but I'm going to make the motion to approve. And I'll approve the rest of the consent agenda with my abstention on item C.
Do we need somebody to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Pete, second by John, is that, is that okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. All right, moving on to item nine, R1012022A. Who's up?
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, city comptroller. The item before you is related to the project agreement that you approved last month for the Andretti Global Headquarters. Last month, we held the first reading for the bonds. And in correlation with discussing the bonds, we were creating an allocation area. So basically pledging the tax increment financing for that area to pay the debt service on those bonds. And so the resolution before you establishes this airport allocation area and allows us to capture the increment and use that for the debt service of the bonds. And this has been through planning commission and approved through them.
All right, do I have a? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Pete, second by Selena, open for discussion. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion by Pete, a second by Selena. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There is some feedback up here, I don't know which microphone it is, but just so you're aware. Item 10, 091922F, the yard phase two PUD, final reading.
Good evening, Megan Bukasich, the director of planning and zoning. This item before you is for an expansion to the existing yard at Fisher's district. And this includes what we're calling the commons at Fisher's district and the new event center that was announced. So you all saw this last month for first reading. It did go to plan commission and then is back before you all tonight for final reading. Just to give you a summary of these developments again. So this exhibit is, if you are moving south from 116th Street, this includes the yard, the mark, the slate at Fisher's district and the union, all of which have been previously approved. And then what we're going on tonight is that area at Orange, which is the event center and the commons at Fisher's district. Here's the proposed site plan again, just as a reminder. So this PUD would be tied to this concept plan and a lot of the development standards do relate back to this. Just wanted to show you guys some of those renderings that were provided last time as a reminder. This would be some examples of renderings for the event center. And then here are some interior renderings as well. Do you want to highlight a few changes from first reading? So we talked a lot about walkability and something that was brought up from the exhibit that was provided before was that the route that goes through the slate at Fisher's district was not what was previously approved and then promised to those residents in the neighborhood directly to the east. And so we have updated that and that is in line with what Thompson Thrift is building today. So just wanted to highlight that that route is interior to the slate at Fisher's district and will not be behind any of these homes over here in Walnut Creek. Just to highlight the buffer standards for this development. The southern buffer does include an eight-foot mound with a six-foot tall fence on top of it, evergreens on both sides. The building itself is set back 180 feet from the nearest residential property line. The eastern buffer includes a four-foot tall berm with six-foot fencing and evergreen trees on both sides. The building is set back pretty significantly from that eastern property line. It's 935 feet away and there is a detention pond that is planned to sit between the parking lot and those residential areas. The building has been oriented to reduce any noise impacts. And then there has been green space provided between the parking lot and those residential areas as well. I do want to highlight that all of the buffers that are included in this development are required to be maintained by the event center property owner. So that is something that we'll review during the tax process to make sure that their landscaping plan meets those buffer yard requirements. And then the property owner of this site of the event center will be required to keep that buffer yard in good condition. Lighting on this property also does include shields. So that way there's no light pollution that's going on those residential homes. There are three main vehicular entrances that are planned along USA Parkway. We did complete a traffic study and believe that all traffic is able to be accommodated on these local roads without any future need for improvements. And then here's a drainage exhibit that was put together by the civil engineer for this project. And so you can see here drainage is really broken up into three areas. With the, the pond that's planned on the east side, you can see the drainage pattern and how that will connect to the existing residential ponds. And we did meet with Walnut Creek in that area and explained the detention design to them and have addressed all of their concerns. So just to highlight all of the public outreach that has been done thus far. Staff held a neighborhood meeting on Monday, September 26th with Walnut Hills, Walnut Creek, Delaware Crossing, and Summerfield. Those are all of the neighborhoods that are directly adjacent to this project. We had about 28 residents on that call and overall it was a positive response to the project. Most of the questions were related to the berms on both the south and the east side of the development and the drainage impacts on the existing detention pond. During that call, I would say about half of the attendees asked for trails to connect directly to this property and about half were not in favor of a direct connection. I do just want to point out that that connection is not dependent on this zoning approval tonight. So that's something that we can continue to explore with those neighborhoods. And if gated access for pedestrian connection is something that we work with the HOA to determine is wanted in this area, then we can accommodate that. That will not be dependent on zoning. We did hold an additional neighborhood meeting with Walnut Hills, as I mentioned, the following Monday just to go over the specific drainage design and that buffering that was already planned on the slate and that will continue on through this portion of the development as well. And then plan commission held their public hearing on Wednesday, October 5th. Plan commission members did have some questions about drainage, parking, traffic. Staff and Thompson Thrift, the developer, were able to answer all of their questions. And during the public hearing, only one resident stood up to speak. She asked if we had, staff had engaged with the Eastern Star Church and we had not at that point. But she did provide contact information and they were reached out to on Friday. I've yet to hear back from them, but I'm happy to continue that line of communication as this goes through the construction process. Plan commission voted to send a favorable unanimous recommendation to city council for approval. And I do just have, if it is approved tonight, the construction schedule, the anticipated start would be spring 2023 with the completion date of December 2024. Staff does recommend approval and I will ask Ryan Menard from Thompson Thrift to come up and briefly just speak on the overall Fisher's district development.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Menard, vice president of development for Thompson Thrift. I appreciate you having us back here for the final reading of the PUD this evening. As you can see on the slide there, this development or these developments really have the chance to be transformational for this portion of the city and for Fisher's in general. The event center is going to provide an anchor for the overall expansion as the district will link 116th Street to 106th Street. The events center itself will sit on a large public plaza that we envision hosting pregame activities, farmers markets, and other public events. And there will be additional developments immediately around the event center that will be able to, again, add additional main streets, restaurants, entertainment concepts, and potential residential options as well. So the development of this facility will bring people and events to the city, increasing its profile in the Midwest, really making it a destination in this region. We've got a strong shared vision that we have put together with the city and we look forward to bringing that to Fisher's. Thank you very much.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, a second?
Second.
Second by Selena, or open it up for comments or questions from the council?
I'd just like to make one comment. We're bringing a professional team, the Indy Fuel, to Fisher's, Indiana. And as a veteran, it's very important to me what kind of team we are bringing here. In talking with the owner tonight, I point blank asked him, have you ever allowed any of your players to take a knee during the national anthem? And his answer was no. And I want to commend you for that as a veteran. I thank you very much.
Anyone else have any comments or questions from the council?
Quick question on the parking for the new development. The Fisher's district now, sometimes I get, you know, feedback from residents that the parking is a little tight. So I just was thinking that, is there a way to provide a little more expansion in that, in those parking lots? Because it's, that's one of the things I, comments I get from the district with tight parking lot space. And the other one is valet. So just want you to consider the parking lot and also valet possibilities. Because that's what I get asked all the time too about the district now.
Certainly, yeah. We look to do not only the event center, but the master plan, the entire site, the slate, the union. And we would also, the event center really partners up for us. The union will be adding parking for others and public drivers. It will increase the amount of parking there and more than a percent. But as far as the valet, I think that's certainly something we can explore. I know in the future, there is some accommodations to add for us to do a proper layout and nice working facilities. You're going to see a lot of ride sharing coming to these facilities, especially the inside, but it's certainly something to consider.
Just to clarify for Councilwoman Cobble, and then this might be a question more for Megan. Nothing in the PUD would preclude a tenant from being able to have a valet parking program of any sort? So there's nothing in the language that would preclude them from doing that if they were able to find a tenant that would like to do that?
Any other questions or comments from council?
I have a quick question here. And it kind of goes along the same lines, but it's along the traffic flow. And I think I spoke to the mayor about it. I get a lot of complaints about the traffic flow within the district. It's just, you know, the, it's hard to get through there. You know, we have people coming in off 116th Street doing a U-turn by HC Tavern and trying to get down to BBBop and things like this. This is my question, what have you learned and how can you make this one better? How can you improve upon it?
As far as the lessons learned, I mean, certainly part of the, the traffic flow issues, I guess, are somewhat intentional. Just because if you see a main street, a lot of times you get people that go flying down that main street. So for us, we were somewhat intentional about trying to break up that flow and be able to move people through but at a safe speed and keep them traffic controlled so that people can walk around and really activate that, just the center and be walking and feel safe doing so. But that being said, yeah, there's certainly lessons we can learn there to try and improve some routing, make sure that we're able to, with the union, for instance, being able to circulate around all those buildings and have traffic do just a more logical traffic pattern, I guess, would be.
I think, I think one push-pull, Councilwoman Stoller, on the design of the current yard is you have the 116th Street, which is a very busy road. You're trying to get people off efficiently while still providing kind of parking that's near proximity to a lot of those stores. And the point that you spoke to me about the other day, I think in particular, is unique to that site. Where you come off 116th Street, you still want to provide parking framing the street. But you also don't want people making left turns in there. And I think that was a choke point. I think what's nice about the remainder of this development is it's off that really busy 116th Street where hopefully ease of access will, will be better than what it was on 116th Street.
Any other questions or comments?
I, um, did you? I'm sorry. I think it's easier to go down the line because we can't really see each other. Thank you very much. I just had, first of all, I will echo what Cecilia and Selena both said. I think just overall, any development that we have off of 116th Street, there are citizen concerns about how pedestrians and motor traffic coexist nicely. So if that can be taken into consideration, I appreciate that. Actually, I did have a question for Megan and you can probably just answer from there. Can you just say one more time? I wasn't sure if I heard, we have many opportunities for neighbors to provide feedback and input. Did you feel like there are any concerns that are left unaddressed? Or do you feel right now like all of those concerns that different neighbors brought up have been fully addressed?
I feel like they've all been fully addressed at this point.
Okay, good, thank you. I just wanted to be sure that was the case, so that's good. Okay, thank you, that's it.
Anyone else? All right. With that, we have a motion by Pete and a second by Selena. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to item 11, ordinance for the city of Fisher's, Hamlin County, Indiana, adopting the city of Fisher's food and beverage tax, second reading.
Okay, good evening, Council President Zimmerman and council, the director Elliot Holker, deputy mayor. So by waiver of fresher, in the spirit of transparency, I'll cover the same material that we covered this past Thursday at our public hearing regarding food and beverage tax. So I'll cover what it is, what's transpired the last couple of weeks and why we're asking for it today. There's no new information being presented this evening. Food and beverage applies to transactions in which food or beverages are furnished, prepared, or served by retail merchant for consumption at a location or on equipment provided by retail merchant for payment. So the short answer to what food and beverage is here in Fisher's is it's what, a 1% tax we apply to the same thing that Hamlin County has been covering for the past 17 years. They put that in place in 2005. We did have that special hearing on October 6th. We had four individuals speak, one from the One Zone Chamber of Commerce, one from Hamlin County Tourism, and two local residents. Since then, we published the responses to those questions and comments on our website the following day on Friday. If they are to pass tonight, it will take effect on December 1st, 2022. So what we're really doing here is we're bringing food and beverage tax and parry with the rest of the Indy metro area. So every single city in the Indy metro, with the exception of Anderson and Fisher's, already have some place. We will be joining our neighbors in Carmel, Nollsville, and Westville, right being together tonight. And it's really an opportunity to invest entertainment, culinary destination opportunities without raising property taxes here in the city of Fisher's. Again, it's a tax on people consuming food and beverage in Fisher's, it's not a tax on Fisher's residents per se. So what we've done the past couple of weeks, broken onto three sections here, public meetings, September 15th, we had a finance committee meeting where we introduced this, September 19th was our first reading. We had two Q and A webinars, one for the neighborhoods, one specifically for the restaurant community. There were zero comments or questions during that Q and A webinar. In our October 5th finance committee meeting, we had October 6th public hearing. We're back here again this evening on October 10th. In the middle there is community outreach, so we've got a website dedicated specifically to food and beverage. We've got FAQ packet, we've got the Department of Revenue's packet on that website as well. Our neighborhood information is out there. We've got minutes and videos posted from each of the meetings we've had on the left-hand side. And again, we've got the public responses up from last Thursday's October 6th meeting as well. And on the right, just to say, this has been well covered and documented by our friends, TV, radio, and digital. So you see there, every single local station, a couple of out-of-market stations, and then print and digital. We've got Current Fisher's coverage twice, IBJ twice, E-Star three times, a regional, rather, industry digest, and the Hamlin County Reporter.
We'd be remiss not to say the excellent coverage by Larry Landon as well.
He spearheads it, so, yes.
That's a fair statement. So we've kind of already heard from Megan, but what this does is this will produce revenue that will go directly and completely toward paying debt on a world-class, mid-sized event center here in our hometown. So we anticipate, and last year, fiscal year 22, we've received $3.2 million in revenue from food and beverage tax. Again, it would go directly towards this $170 million facility you see some renderings of here before you. And again, to state it, put a fine point on it, it will go directly and completely towards the event center for payments. We're going to bring in top-tier concerts and musical acts, a variety of additional entertainment events. And of course, the new home of the ECHL Indy Fuel. And finally, again, something we should all be proud of, hosting a number of community-centered events. Some core memory opportunities for Fisher's high school graduates, HSE high school graduates in the bloodstock basketball game, just to name a few of those opportunities. So I will close, appreciate your consideration of the food and beverage tax this evening.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John, I open it up for comments or questions? I just have a quick one, without this, we would not be able to build this without raising property taxes or doing, taking some other action, right?
Event center does not happen without this.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
I do.
Okay.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'll mention that I am excited about this project and excited to welcome the Indy Fuel. I think there are some marvelous opportunities for the Indy Fuel to be something that our community can really be proud of. If the food and beverage tax passes today, Fisher's residents literally become investors in this event center. So I'm looking forward to not only how our community gets to enjoy it, but also the tourism economy that can come along with it. So we've already talked about, I'm hoping the administration over the next two years will establish kind of the foundation and the groundwork so that tourism economy can really flourish. I have two concerns about approving, charging a food and beverage tax on our citizens today. And the first one, and actually both of these comments I know have been mentioned before. So the first one, of course, is the ordinance that we have in front of us has no sunset clause. The food and beverage tax, according to the ordinance, would continue in perpetuity. And I would strongly recommend that there would be some closing to it so that the ladies and gentlemen who sit up here 40 years from now have the opportunity to make good decisions in that moment. So I am advocating for a sunset clause to be added to the ordinance at the 40-year mark, which directly connects with the 40-year bond that the food and beverage tax revenue will fund, help fund. So that's one. And then the second, I'm sorry, I almost forgot what the second one is. Hold on, let me just double check my notes. Oh, of course. The ordinance, back to the ordinance, does not include anything in writing that marries the food and beverage tax revenue to the event setter project. And for, for me, those two things go hand in hand, that's why we're doing this. But there's nothing in the ordinance that's in front of us that makes that connection. Those are my two concerns.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Would you like to address those now or move on?
Again, on the, the 40-year, on the sunset clause, whether we put that in or not, the men and women 40 years from now have the opportunity to decide food and beverage tax should no longer be a thing in the city of Fisher's, whether or not you choose to put it in the ordinance tonight.
One, one point of clarification as we think through that.
Yes.
We had to get special legislation at the state house that gave us until the end of next year to adopt a food and beverage tax. One thing that if you put an automatic sunset, there's no guarantee that the state legislature would authorize the authority for the local government to reenact a food and beverage tax 40 years from now. So it's not just in the control and destiny of this city council. You would have to, you would have to go back to the state house 40 years from now and try to get the legislation passed again. So that's one thing to contemplate as you think about this is it's not just a restriction you're putting on yourself, but rather you would, you would have to go back to the state legislature for special legislation to reenact.
I understand that, but at that point, the project would be paid for, right? Like, right?
Oh, no, I understand that. I'm just saying that it's not as simple as you guys sunsetting it. You would have to go back to state legislature and ask for approval.
I understand, I understand, thank you. I'm sorry, David, go ahead.
Hey, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong. Legally, I believe the council at any point in time during any subsequent year that goes on can remove that tax.
Yes and no. So what we're going to do is we're going to pledge the food and beverage revenues directly to the event center. And so there's a covenant within the state statute that protects bondholders knowing that the state legislature is never going to remove the food and beverage tax during that 40-year period. Same would be true here for the city council if we're continuing to pledge it for the event center.
So because it's got to be used as a financial backing to the bonds, that makes perfect sense. So at the 40-year mark where those bonds are then paid off, the council at that point could take its action on its own, who's ever going to be here, because it's not going to be me, okay? To go ahead and remove the food and beverage tax, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Chris responded to your second question in the statement that the bond documents will pledge the food and beverage tax as a secondary revenue stream to pay that debt. So in the bond documents, it will literally say the city of Fisher's is pledging local option income tax with a backup of food and beverage tax supporting that. So your question about tying it directly to the event center will be in the bond documents.
But we're, the bond documents aren't in front of us today.
That's correct, nor will they be. Because the bond documents are approved by the Town Hall Building Corporation.
Right, right. So I, I'm sorry, just to put a very fine point on it. We're asked to approve charging a new tax on residents today without the in-writing commitment of what the revenue is going to go for.
In terms of the ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes, it doesn't specify that.
Okay.
But we are pledging it for the event center and all the bond documents.
So, I'm, forgive me, is there a reason why the, again, just the commitment in writing to marry these, the commitment to the, the bond and the revenue that'll be charged to residents? Can't that be in, in writing in the ordinance?
It can be.
Okay.
The ordinance before you is a resuscitation of state law. It's a resuscitation of the authorization that we've been given.
And we've fulfilled that.
We have, in this ordinance, correct.
Okay. I'm going to allow, David, please go ahead and then we'll circle back.
No, no, I think for me, the food and beverage tax is a good thing for this event center because over time, you're going to see that grow and it'll free up the funding, the cumulative fund and some of the other funding that we have. So I'd like to see it. I mean, I think it'll be tied just based on the bond. So I think that's real positive. I just wanted to tell, tell folks that I do care about what you think about this tax increase. Because this was a tough decision for me. And so I worked hard to try to get your opinions. I spammed 6,500 people in my district with a text, you know? And I tried my best to be transparent, to let them know this is going to be a tax. and I tried my best to be transparent, to let them know this is going to be a tax increase, you know, paying for an event center. A while back, I went door-to-door and I took a, I took a sample of a sixteen hundred homes in, in my district and had self-stamped return envelopes and got those results. I spent an hour and a half at the farmer's market, and I talked to tons of neighbors, friends, and my wife endlessly, and I bothered Mayor Fadden, it's probably hours and hours.
We had lots of, lots of quality time.
But, you know, I tallied all that up, and I just wanted to let people know that most people want this event center, and they don't mind paying the little amount of tax increase this is.
Any other comments or questions?
If there are no further comments, and forgive me, I can't see down the line there, so I don't want to step on anyone's toes. I would like to make a motion that language be included in this ordinance tonight that specifies how the food and beverage tax revenue will be used for the forty-year bond for the event center. I'd like to make that motion.
So it's, it's an amendment?
It's an amendment.
Amending the motion.
Amendment, amendment to it. So you would ask for a second?
Well, then I have a second amendment.
Yeah, so you're just amendment, not a second, an amendment, and then you're asking for a second. We're asking for a second to your motion.
Yes, and in addition, then another amendment to include a sunset clause that specifies that the food and beverage tax concludes at, at the forty-year mark. Those are my two, two amendments.
Perfect, so council president's in room, let's take these one at a time. Can you call for a motion amending the ordinance to specify the use for the event center? As Councilwoman Vera asked, oh, you asked for that, so you can get a second.
I would need a, I just said, I would need a second for her motion to amend for, what was your, I apologize, what was your first?
To list the event center.
Yes, to list the event center as the sole.
Correct.
Yeah, as the sole beneficiary to funding this. Is there a second? There's no second, okay, we'll move on. Okay, go, let's go to the second amendment.
Okay, so the first amendment fails, the second amendment is tying a sunset clause to the, is it to the bond? Councilwoman Vera, how are you defining it?
Sunset clause to the collection of the food and beverage tax at the forty-year mark.
For the life of the bond.
Okay, so, so I'm calling for a second. Is there's a second to Councilwoman Varr's amendment with regarding the sunset clause for the forty years on the food and beverage? Is there a second? With none, that has failed, so we'll go on to the first motion. There was a motion by Pete and a second by John for approval, is that correct? Do I have that correct?
It's correct.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
One, nay, any abstentions? All right, motion, motion passes.
You voted for the project, but you're not voting for the funding. If you're going to vote for the project, how do you propose to fund it?
I appreciate your question. My job is not to create the funding model. My job is to decide if it is in the best interest of citizens to have this ordinance pass, and I voted no.
And it goes hand in hand, so you can't pass one without the other.
It passed, so we can move on.
So, all right.
Go ahead. So I guess my question is, if you're, I mean, did, in finance committee, did you bring up other avenues of funding if you didn't like the current budget?
Both of these, both of these issues that I presented today were addressed or were discussed in the finance committee meeting, yes.
All right, so we'll move on to item twelve, so eleven has passed. Move on to item twelve, R one zero one zero two two B.
Great, thank you again. So this is the next step on the events in our process. So previously on the nineteenth, we're authorized to pursue steps, pursue steps to negotiate a lease with Town Hall Building Corporation. That lease will be backed by local income tax, but we covered, as we've discussed, with our CCD fund, our payment lieu taxes from our utility, the operational revenue from the event center, and the now new food and beverage tax that was just passed. Also before you, we have the petition of signatures that's been confirmed by our county auditor. So following a public hearing on this resolution, I'm asking for approval to execute the lease to finance the event center with the Town Hall Building Corporation.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Pete, a second by John. I'm going to open this up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, and it is on this item and this item only, step forward and state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one stepping forward, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion by Pete and a second by John. Open up for questions or comments from council. Seeing none, going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to item thirteen, R one zero one zero two two C.
Good evening, last time for me tonight, I promise, this is the final step on the event center for this evening. Establishes a fund, the event center twenty twenty-two bond construction fund for the purchase, purchase price from the Town Hall Building Corporation in exchange for the sale of those fire stations listed this evening. So again, this requires a public hearing, but appreciate your consideration on establishing this fund.
Okay, I will open this up for a public hearing. Yeah, go ahead, motion by, motion by Pete, second by Selena. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item alone, step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes, my name's Carl Ever, and I'm, my question is this, what real estate are you referring to?
Okay, is that, is that, so?
In the resolution received from the sale of real estate to the Fishers Town Hall Building.
Sir.
What is, what constitutes the real estate?
So, okay, we appreciate that. In a public hearing, you can just provide your input and questions, and then we'll go through everyone else, and then we have the right to either respond to that at that moment at the end, but we won't go back and forth with each person.
That's my question, what constitutes the real estate?
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you want to, just answer that question, please?
Fire stations ninety-one, ninety-four, and ninety-five.
Ninety-one, ninety-four, ninety-five. All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Pete, I'm sorry, second by Selena. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Moving on to item fourteen, R one zero one two two D, a resolution approving a project agreement by and among Thompson Thrift, the City of Fishers, Fishers Town Hall Building Corp., and the City of Fishers redevelopment.
Good evening, for the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Community and Economic Development for the City of Fishers. As previously mentioned during Megan's presentation and Elliot's, last month, we brought forward five hundred and fifty million dollars worth of new investment coming in for the next phase of Fishers District expansion. Tonight, this item is the project agreement specifically for the Union at Fishers District, so that is the area on the northern portion of the aerial, just south of the existing yard at Fishers District. So included in this project agreement, Thompson Thrift plans to invest between a hundred and forty and a hundred and sixty million dollars into this development, which includes a mixed-use development with multifamily, retail, seventy thousand square feet of office, a standalone parking garage that was previously discussed, and then also a hotel with retail on the bottom of that. And this is, again, this will be right next to the slate, so the properties that you see are those boxes on the right-hand side. Those are all the townhomes from, from the Fishers Slate Development. Similar to what we had talked about last time, the Union at Fishers District is going to have an incredible impact on our community. The existing assessed value of the real property, so again, any sort of improvements, the land is zero dollars. The new assessed value from all of these developments is projected to be seventy-eight point six million dollars. Annual taxes using the TIF rate, so again, that removes the referendum that flows through to our schools, is two point five million dollars. And then the value to the HSE School District each year, that number is not, the four sixty-three, I'm sorry, the value below that, the two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, that is the value of this particular project to the schools each year, which is the total compensation of two teachers. And one thing I do want to point out, the renderings that you see on the right, those are just about exactly what this development is going to look like. So it's a pretty incredible project. Union at Fishers District, the, in the project agreement, we have one incentive request, which is issuing a developer-purchased bond, so Thompson Thrift will purchase their own bonds. We will just be the issuer, so all of the debt responsibility that is on Thompson Thrift and their team. Current proceeds are estimated about twenty-six million dollars. Before any sort of bond is issued, there is a financial analysis that is completed and is referenced in the project agreement, that then the city and the developer then comes to terms on this. These are the proceeds that are going to be available. So with that current bond estimate, we're looking at between twenty-two and twenty-three million dollars of net proceeds for them. Thompson Thrift is here again to talk a little bit about the project, and we're happy to answer any questions after that, right?
And this is for councilmember Dreamer, but in bold red letters, there's no fee or inspection waivers.
I did notice that. Yeah, they'll put it in red.
Yep.
Good evening again. Earlier spoke about the shared vision that we've had with the city and Fishers here as we've realized some of these developments out there, and we want to thank certainly the mayor and staff for their hard work and dedication to bringing these developments from conceptualization, you know, several years back to where we are today. So we feel strongly that the Union's going to continue and feel like a logical expansion of the yard. It's going to operate and feel as though it's one development with both vehicular and pedestrian connectivity. There's been a lot of thought put into the proposed, proposed composition of the development, and we'll continue to focus then on the routing and the flow, as we've talked about this evening, as well as parking, to be able to make sure that it operates efficiently, but most importantly, safely for the residents here, to be able to connect from the event center, give them a path to walk up past the forum, credit union offices into the yard and the Union, and then even be able to go back down through slate, back down to the event center. So we feel that, again, with this intentionality and with this dedication to design, that it's just going to add another piece to the city that will be a vibrant piece here. So just want to thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you, I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second, motion by Pete, second by John, all those in favor, I'm sorry, excuse me. Any questions or comments? None?
Yeah, I have a question. So the twenty-six million dollar incentive, what is that going to pay for, the parking garage, is that?
The plan is, so the standalone parking garage, we don't charge any sort of parking fees for those. What we've talked about with council before is that that is not an asset that generates any sort of value or revenue for them. So the anticipation is that the, all of the proceeds go towards that parking garage, that standalone parking garage, not the, the self-enclosed, the self-enclosed parking garage associated with the multifamily project.
And that, that will be owned by, by the Union or?
As of right now, I believe it'll be owned by Thompson Thrift.
And they will maintain it over the period, the?
Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question on that. So what is our plan to actually get people to park in the parking garage? At the yard, they don't.
Scott knows that parking garages are the, just a challenge that we deal with all the time. But I do think, to Cecilia, your point earlier, Selena, yours as well, I think that people are utilizing the Fishers District, the existing parking garage. So hopefully, I mean, it will be a standalone garage, and people are naturally inclined to go there because it will be tight, I mean, based off of everything that we've seen at Fishers District. So the hope would be that if people can't find something at the yard, they know that that's an additional resource for them.
I also think this is a slightly different dynamic. So this garage is intentionally built for the office and hotel users, and those folks are more likely to park in the garage than, say, someone who's just going out to eat. So the goal is to get those folks off your street parking and free that up for folks that are just going out to dinner.
I had a question, so with regard to the parking in the, in the garage, that's another thing that I've heard from residents sometimes, is like all the, the first floor and second floor parking spaces are utilized for the people that are working in the office space or, and so that, I guess, people don't want to go all the way up to the top floors to park to, you know, be a patron. So is there a best practice or some things that maybe we could change to, to make it better, I guess? Because that's one thing I've heard from other parking garages in our city where they're reserved, and so, you know, they're, they're having to go all the way out to the top, and I guess they, they're like, forget that, we're just going to not park in the garage. So I didn't know if there was a better system or a better thought-out process of how that's going to work in terms of the spaces there.
I think probably the best way to handle that is kind of a top-down designation for parking. So you start with, if it is an office tenant or something along those lines, then you have them park in that top. So that, our, our intention is to leave the ground floor available for the retail and restaurant and those tenants within the development.
Great, thank you, that would be great, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Here we have a motion by Pete, a second by John, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item fifteen, zero nine one nine two two, request, request to approve the City of Fishers twenty twenty-three budget.
Just joking with Chris, I guess it's appropriate as I come up here to talk about the budget, my wallet fell out while I was coming up here. Really, just to update the council since our last meeting, there has been discussion about the budget at Finance Committee as well as the previous council meeting, we had a discussion. There have been no formal amended changes to the budget since that time. And so tonight, I'm really here just to answer any questions and just reinforce again, I want to appreciate, I want to thank the council for your leadership and vision on voting for the, the arena and the development. It's this type of growth, this belief in ourselves and investing in ourselves that have allowed us to be in the financial position we are today, which is to stand before you and propose a, yet again, property tax reduction for the residents of Fishers. In fact, our goal here is to be back to twenty twenty tax rates. So that's pretty extraordinary, and I'm here just to answer any questions, and if not, consider it out.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by John, second by Selena, open it up for comments or questions from Mayor.
And I do have a comment to make, and, and Mayor, I certainly appreciate all the effort that's gone through in this budget. You guys do a spectacular job, you and all your department heads each and every year, and has really nothing to do with the budget. I, who have been on the not-for-profit committee since its inception, okay, have struggled mightily with that committee. And I'm going to go back and I'm going to say it, that item needs to be pushed over to the mayor's office solely. I don't want any part of that. I don't believe a council member should be put in a position to spend taxpayer money on not-for-profits. You can go back and look at a famous speech that Colonel Davy Crockett, House of Representatives, gave on the very topic. If we want to give money, why don't we all dedicate a month of our salary to some not-for-profits that are out there in Fishers? I'm all for that, I'm willing to do that. What I am unwilling to do is vote for anything again where the council is going to attribute money through a committee or any other method that we're giving away tax dollars to not-for-profit enterprises. It's gotten out of control, and I won't have any part of it. So I'd like, as a consideration of this, just to move that line item fully over to the mayor's discretion. That's my amendment.
Any other questions or comments?
I disagree with Pete. Pete, if you don't like it, take yourself off the committee, and you don't have to worry about it. I think the city council is the one that needs to make that decision because now we've got nine people making that decision, not one. And we get involved with those nonprofits, crystal mean, we get involved with them, we know what's going on. The mayor doesn't have time to do that, so I disagree with that.
And then I have a different perspective, actually, I've been having a few conversations with a few of my colleagues, but I, I think to Pete's point, you know, we're using taxpayer dollars and we're making that call, and there's a lot of worthy not-for-profits. But I would like to see if we have extra money to give to our community and make an impact, that that money be looked at, and how can we help the needs of our residents in a given year? So look at what are our priorities as a city, whether it's mental health, whether it's the dis- it's the disability community? We have a lot of unmet needs as a city this size, where I'd like that money to be looked at year to year, and decide, where should we take that money and really make an impact to really help our citizens, so that the money stays within Fisher's?
Anyone else with questions or comments?
Look, if I could just say one quick thing, you have an amendment on the floor you're going to have to, you're going to have to consider, but approval of this budget tonight one way or another, the money can sit there. We can't spend it without your approval around these nonprofit grants anyways. So this has been a discussion for you guys, going back to its inception. And honestly, it warrants the nine of you coming to some degree of consensus, whether, you know, whether you all agree to it or not, but some direction for us. Our office is indifferent. We can execute the way that you're doing it, we can execute if it comes back on us. You nine have to come up with that conclusion. The only thing I'd remind you is that we're up against the clock to approve our budget, and so it may be something that you have to have a further discussion on.
Would it make more sense for us to maybe have a work session, to kind of work through this and see what direction we're going to go?
Yeah, I think, I think it...
Rather than approving the budget this evening?
What I would like is for all of you to come to some final conclusion on what it is and how it is you want to go about administering nonprofit dollars moving forward, because I think we've kind of gone back and forth several times in different iterations, and then the nonprofit community gets confused, staff gets confused. And so I think it would be good to just kind of come up with some finality, one way or another, and then bring that back to the council for final approval at a later time. But yes, I agree.
I'll withdraw my amendment, okay, but I do want to put on a very forthcoming work session to talk about it.
I think it's timely. Yeah, absolutely.
I think it makes more sense.
Yeah, there's probably nine different opinions up here.
There are nine, there's 22 different opinions.
Right, right. But we do need to have that. I mean, to, you know, to Pete's point, or anybody else's point here, it's very important, we got to figure out the right way to handle, there's nothing wrong with having this dialogue. It's, we're trying to figure out the right way to handle taxpayer dollars.
Well, the key is communicate, communicate what we're going to do.
Exactly. Just make sure the nonprofits understand what to expect or not to expect, and what's next step, so...
And I think, to Pete's point, I guess the urgency is, we need to have that conversation before the end of the year, so that we can inform the nonprofit community how we're approaching things moving into next year.
So let's make sure our work session in November, we have that, okay?
Can I, one more comment, please? Just to specify, there is, within the budget that we are asked to approve tonight, there is a dollar amount of $250,000 allocated for nonprofit grants. That is included in the budget that is before us. Secondly, and Chris, I ask you to correct me if I'm wrong, we have established a pathway to address this and have this open conversation, which I think would be very productive, and that was supposed to be through the Rules Committee. The Rules Committee was established and has not yet met, it was established, I think, nine months ago, has not yet met, to address the other committees of the council, including the nonprofit grant committee. So whether it's a work session or whatever, but the Rules Committee was to address this. Correct?
Well, I don't think this has been presented to the full council like it's been tonight as a problem for somebody to tackle, right? So if the proposal's to come back for a work session, then I think that's completely appropriate.
If you agree, I think, let's start with work session, and then, and then we can decide in the work session kind of where to go, if that's...
That sounds fine.
That's fair. Okay.
We'll bring some snacks for the November work session.
Kumbaya moment. We need to have some sort of, you know, a little bonfire, just people chill, relax, it'd be good. All right. So, I don't remember. We have a motion by John, and a second by Selena, to approve the budget. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you all.
Okay, the budget passes. Thank you, Mayor. Moving on, item 16091922G, a request to approve the City of Fisher's 2023 Salary Ordinance.
Good evening, Ethan Lee, Director of Human Resources. Here this evening to present to you the second reading of approval for the 2023 Salary Ordinance. As before, all the proposed changes in the 2023 ordinance either have no financial impact, or have, of course, been included in the 2023 budget. Other than adjusting for the 4% employee wage increase, these changes are really intended to update position titles and salary grades, to make sure we're aligned with current roles and remain competitive in the job market. The only changes I do want to notate from the first reading are bringing up the fire clothing allowance for the fire department to match the police department, and then also in permitting inspections department, moving the building commissioner and environmental health coordinator to a higher salary grade. Those are the only adjustments made from the first reading, and with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. Let's open up for comments or questions by council.
Ethan, I just have one quick question. We have a few amazing positions on the health department that are, I think there are multiple, that are funded by grants. Those are not included in this salary ordinance, or they are?
So they are on the ordinance as far as the maximum amount that we would pay that position, but if it's grant-funded, then it is only strictly grant-funded.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if that was considered separate or within this, and I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it is separate. It would be strictly grant-funded.
Okay, thank you.
Just before we vote on this, this is obviously part of the budget that we're putting together, and I wanted to just take a moment to thank my committee, the Budget Finance Committee, for going through this process. Also, Lisa Bradford and her team, Scott and his team, this has been a good budget process. We've had a lot of discussion, a lot of opportunities for input, so just want to say thank you everybody for all your help. You as well, Ethan. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right. We had a motion by Pete, a second by Selena, to approve. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 17 was pulled from the agenda. Moving on to item 18, 101022.
For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. As you guys pass the 2023 budget, included in that budget consideration was what we term our one-year general obligation bond. So item, the item before you and item A after it are the 2023 GO bonds. So the first GO bond is related to road construction and improvement projects. It's a not-to-exceed amount of 5.5 million. And as you may recall from our Finance Committee discussions, it's really hard to list a lot of the resurfacing projects that will be covered by this bond. Jason Taylor, Engineering Director, does have a list, but as he'll tell you, if it's a hard winter, some of that may shift, but there is a system related to priority of the roads for the resurfacing, and then this also includes some of our other construction projects that we've discussed in Finance Committee budget meetings. And this is first reading for the 2022, 2023 bonds.
Questions or comments? I'll give them a first reading. First reading, do we have questions or comments from anybody? All right. Pete's given a first reading. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 19, 101022A.
As I mentioned before, this is the one-year GO, just the second piece of it. This will focus on vehicles and equipment. As we've discussed in previous sessions, we've moved what used to be our fleet loan to the one-year GO, so that's what the vehicles and equipment are, predominantly public safety-related vehicles. And then within this is also some certain trail projects and certain specific trail connectivity areas. So this is also for first reading.
Any questions or comments from council?
Just a quick note on that, because I know this was a hot topic among the, during the budget time, I want to thank Megan Bukasich, worked with Jason Taylor, MPO, and we recently received a $75,000 grant to identify and study trail connections. So that's, that'll be a good step forward in really identifying where those gaps are and starting to progress that plan.
First reading. Okay, good, first reading. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 20, 091922L, an ordinance of the City of Fisher's amending section 3530 of the City of Fisher's Code of Ordinances for reinspection fees.
Thank you, Council President Zimmerman. Council for the record, Chris Griesel, City Attorney, here on second reading on these reinspection fees. As the council recalls, we had a work session over this, over the summer, and during first reading, we discussed the changes to the ordinance on those reinspection fees, which I think we had unanimous direction on during work session, to relook at those fees and to engage on those fee inspections. So just to go over those with you one more time, the permit penalty for a reinspection or a failure on a first reinspection is being increased from $75 to $125. A second failed reinspection from $150 to $300. A third reinspection is being increased from $500 to $750. And subsequent reinspections and stop-work orders are being amended as appropriately to encompass that new third failed reinspection fee. Again, these are reinspection failures of the same permit, subsequent hits from our building commissioner, Todd Succi, and his staff, of continual noncompliance over the same permit issue. We have notified Baggy of this issue before us here tonight, that we were bringing forward this council amendment, and at that time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. And our building commissioner is also here tonight, making the trek. He's got a long drive home, so we need to get him out.
I do have a quick question here. So if they're, if they have so many violations, and it seems like that they're just willing just to pay it, do we have any way of saying, hey, you can't, we don't issue any more building permits until your violations are under a certain percentage? Are we allowed to do anything like that?
I think it becomes hard once you get out of the per-permit that you're working on. We certainly have the ability through this ordinance to issue stop-work orders, and it's something that we can take more advantage of. The cumulative factor, I think, is a different issue. That's why we're, step one, raising the fees to see if we can make a dent and impact on some of these multiple and continuous reinspection failures that we're experiencing.
Where there is a degree of accountability is the request that you had for rezones to share, you know, performance, past performance. So there, in that more subjective policy arena, you guys can take that under consideration. I think, you know, for Chris, under the legal interpretation, when we're talking about a specific permit, we have to address the issues within that specific permit.
Let's make sure. First of all, do we have a motion to approve this? Item 20.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Selena, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just quickly, and I certainly appreciate what we're trying to do here, and I think it actually makes full-on sense, but, and I talked to Megan about this at one point in time, I believe, Megan, you and I talked about it, is the education process that has to go on with those home builders. And, you know, for finding that some of these home builders are continually kind of using our guys as inspectors, which is not really appropriate, you know, we need to somehow get a workshop together or do something to bring these people in, to say how we're inspecting and why they're failing. Now, whether or not they show up or not, I can't do that, but at least to make that offer to them, so they're not going to claim ignorance going, I didn't know that was, it wouldn't pass, you know, one of those type of things. So I just want to make sure we're being fair to that side, too. I mean, we're still growing, and we still want developers down here to help us grow, and to build good houses, and to do all the right things. But I think sometimes this has gotten to the point where it gets a little crazy, and we're making accusations on them that may be partly true, but maybe partly not true, right?
Well, we certainly...
There's a lot of changeover in the labor market, too, going on in construction, now I know that. And my son's been working in this now, so, I mean, again, I just want to make sure we're giving them an avenue to basically come in here from our building directors, say, hey, this is kind of the way I'm doing things, and why you guys keep failing? Just a comment, I'm not going to vote against it.
Good evening, council. Todd Succi, Building Commissioner. And to kind of touch on what you're talking about, so the codes and the violations, the inspection process, it's not exclusive to Fisher's. It's adopted by the state, and it's recognized in every municipality throughout the state, that they shouldn't be coming here seeing expectations that are exclusive to just Fisher's. It should be the same. It should be consistent across the state. And to talk a little bit more about the cross-training and things of that nature, so we've hosted Lunch and Learns in the past, I'm actually in one this Wednesday. We've opened it up to, you know, one-on-one conversations, team conversations. We've had, you know, five, six, seven superintendents from the same company meet with all six building inspectors, and we've walked houses in the winter once we've slowed down. So I don't think it is, I don't think it's a not-understanding part of it. I literally think, you know, turnover has been difficult for the construction industry, and, you know, and for every industry, to be honest with you, but I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a gap between expectations and reality as to what's happening in the field.
I guess, if I go and do that, you know, continue to do that, it's the right thing to do. So, again, we're going to put ourselves, as we've got a community, to do most, so I won't want to strive to get ourselves, you know, in that kind of learning process with them. So I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you, Todd.
I have a quick question. Do they get a copy, the builders get a copy of our policy and our fee schedule, like, moving forward? Will they, will they get something, like, before they start, that shows and explains our policies and our fee schedule for noncompliance?
So, maybe from a legal perspective. As far as the policies in regard, I'm assuming you're speaking to the code sections and things of that nature? So, yeah, as I said before, they're state-adopted, and it's actually pushed by the state as to what the year adoption was, and the amendments that go along with that. As far as the inspection process, we haven't had a change in seven years, as far as which inspections, and in the sequence in which they occur. So, I don't know, is that answering what you're...
But can they be given, so if this is approved this evening, you know, could this be something where we provide them with our policy on inspections and provide them with the schedule?
I don't want to speak out of turn here, but I would assume there might be the opportunity through Viewpoint Cloud to push out an update as to what the new inspection...
Sure, Baggy, Baggy would be a good example, I'd as well...
We can make sure it's communicated effectively, so they're not surprised when they get that first permit or the second violation.
Monday.
Monday. Yeah, at the rate we're going, they're going to know pretty quickly.
I have a comment or question. This was an action step to address a problem. So the fees are being doubled or more to serve as a deterrent, so hopefully, quick compliance is the outcome here. Can you, but we also acknowledged in previous conversations, there was this risk of that not being successful, and the additional fees just getting passed along to the Fisher's consumer. So my question's this, when or how would we discern if this is effective or not? If this action step was successful?
Sure. So I think, just like any legislative action, you're going to pass it today, and then we're going to have a time period to go view what that could be like, whether it's a year, two years, will we come back, reassess whether the fees are working or not, whether it's getting quick compliance for Todd, whether Todd's having in his team to issue more stop-work orders over a certain permitted item or not, versus the developer just paying, or the builder, home builder, rather, just paying and moving on and potentially passing that fee along. I think, I think we'll get a pretty good understanding within the next 12 months of what the process looks like.
And we track the data monthly, as far as pass/fail rates. I mean, those numbers are over-scrutinized by my office. We have pretty good data. At any given time, we could give you a plus or minus 1% or 2% of where we're at. So they're watched carefully.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so we had a motion by Selena and a second by John. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 091922H, an ordinance of the City of Fisher's approving the redistricting of legislative maps.
Hi, again, for the record, Chris Griesel, City Attorney, here for the second reading of our council redistricting, and reviewing an amended map reflecting some minor changes from first reading, so I want to go over those. During first reading, I gave council an overview of both Indiana and federal law with respect to drawing legislative district boundaries. As you may recall, the legislative districts have to be drawn during the second year after a federal decennial census, which is why we're going through this process right now. During first reading, the council heard from several members from the Gray Eagle neighborhood who didn't want their neighborhoods split up with the proposal that was before you. So council leadership worked to find a way to put Gray Eagle into one legislative district, which it's now in District Four, the South Central District, in the proposed map that's before you here tonight.[1742.16] before you here tonight. To accomplish that change, two legislative precincts were given back to District One, which is the Southeast District. Those precincts are located in the southwest corner of that district and are currently served by that district today. So with that, I'm happy to report that the revised map, which is before you for your final consideration tonight, is more compact than the version that was presented to you during first reading. The difference between the largest district, which is now District Five, the Southwest District, and the smallest district, which is the North Central District, District Three, is approximately eight point six-two percent. So if you recall, our disparity during first reading between the largest and smallest district was approximately nine point two percent. So we tightened that gap a little bit. And again, just a reminder, federal constitutional law, right, with respect to the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution, where the maximum population deviation between the largest district and the smallest district is less than ten percent, the local legislative map is presumptively going to comply with the one-person, one-vote principle. These maps have also been reviewed by the Hamilton County Elections Office. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, first of all, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Pete.
Second.
Second by Selena. Open up for questions or comments. I do want to say thank you for your hard work, and thank you, Councilor Dreamer, for, you know, getting the feedback from Gray Eagle. I think that was a very good outreach, and they got, you know, they got what they were really wanting, which was one council representative other than the at-large. So, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments?
I do.
Okay.
We, we did not receive, like, a street-level, able-to-zoom-in view of these maps, and I really don't understand why that wasn't made available to us, because one of my questions, I can't, I can't discern exactly what's happening here. This is something, actually, I just noticed today, as I tried to look at the maps closer. Can I ask you a very specific question on the map? The Gray Eagle community, I think, very appropriately asked for their entire community to stay intact. We have Park Shore HOA, PPOA, is one of our largest HOAs in the community, and it looks to me like that HOA is divided. And, so can you tell me if it is or not? It is just north of one hundred and thirty-first Street on Cumberland, and it looks like the community is split between District Two and Three. That would be north, sorry, that was the other request we had, was that we don't get my numbers, because I'm getting confused. District Two and Three, I think, split an HOA.
Okay.
So, are you...
What's your question? I'm sorry, I don't understand it.
So, does it, is it, I'm not certain that it does split an HOA. Can you tell me if it does?
I'm not certain either.
Huh?
I'm not certain either, whether it splits an HOA.
Chris, is there any law that, that says that a community can't be split in an HOA?
No.
To, to my knowledge, Chris, you live in, in, in the community, correct? You live in the newer side of, is it Windstone?
I live in Windermere.
Yeah, right, isn't there a, isn't there a west and, and east side of Windermere?
Yes, there is.
There is, okay. And I think, John, you and I split Windermere for the last five or four elections anyways?
Yes.
So, this is not new ground. I mean, Gray Eagle made an ask, Brad certainly helped them make the ask, which is fine, and I think they accommodated that through getting it done, but this is not some kind of precedent that's been set, that they're not going to get representation, that you don't split HOAs, right? Again, they fall into precinct maps, et cetera, and then you have to go by state and federal law when you're doing these things. So it is not a thing that you have to abide by to make sure that every single HOA is represented by one particular, you know, councilperson in a district. And remember, there are also, you've got three at-larges who also represent them as well as a whole. So again, don't get hung up on the fact that you just can't draw a perfect line around an HOA district. I mean, you've got the GHPOA around Geist, I mean, you can't have that in, in one particular district, because it resides in three different cities. So again, that's not part of the state and/or federal law, so I just wouldn't get hung up on it.
I'm concerned about it, because we can't even discern if that's the case.
I, I don't look at HOAs when we look through the maps. But to Pete's point, state law, make sure that you don't cross precinct lines, and then you draw the districts as reasonably compact as you can. So the districts that I can tell you that are before you tonight comply with both Indiana and federal law.
Okay, I...
I think, I did see a comment that was sent in about that.
Yeah, actually.
And I think it was those northern neighborhoods that, in order to bring the districts in line, I had to take a precinct of one of those neighborhoods. I don't think anybody realized that there were three neighborhoods there that were under one HOA, but it is three neighborhoods with three different names.
Correct, you're exactly right.
With Woodbury, Clantana...
And Rosewood. And I, it looks to me like Rosewood's carved out, so...
And I was gonna, I think it's...
I, I think we can all agree it's not ideal. I don't care if there was a precedent or whatever, like, I think we can agree it wasn't ideal. And my secondary point was, we're, we can't even really discern where the lines are on the maps that we were given. That's a problem.
See, you know, and one of, one of the things I would point out to, in all of this in totality is, whenever you get into this, it becomes, you know, unfortunately, it can become political, and we hear the narrative across the nation of gerrymandering on both Republican, Democrat sides, we see it throughout the nation. And what was great about this process is, there was zero of that taken into consideration. We actually tried to make sure that these were squared off as much as possible, so when you looked at it, it, like, for instance, John's, I don't even know what, is it South Central, is that what it was? Okay. I think his is more compact now than the way it was this last time, where it looked like it was drawn like, you know, like, all like this. And so, I, you know, I think that, to optics, it looks good, to making sure that, you know, we have a bipartisan council here, nobody was drawn out of their, out of their precinct, you know, out of their, out of their district, and we accommodated everything possible in this, and I didn't know about the HOA thing until today. So, so that's, you know, we, we want to take in consideration everything possible, but at the same time, there's ninety or a hundred thousand people aren't all going to have an exact, you know, perfect scenario when you, when you draw any map for anybody. That's just, is the reality of it. If you go through, if you go through the school redistricting, see what they go through, you know, seems like every few years, and the, the stuff that comes out with that, so I just think this is as smooth as possible. I agree, we need to see that zoomed, it'd be good to have the GIS in, you know, as we, as we get this, so that everybody can see exactly whoever's deciding they want to throw their name in the hat to run.
So my only comment to that, Council President Zimmerman, is that on the website, just like we did for first reading, you have an aggregate map of what all the districts look like, you have an aggregate map with the precincts on there, then you have a zoomed-in map of each and every single district that's on there.
Correct.
Once those maps are passed, we'll plug that into the GIS system. You do have an overlay boundary that's there today, that you can go through and walk through the GIS system. So I appreciate that comment.
So there is a map on there that zooms in...
Yeah, I'll show you.
...each district that shows the...
Not right now. Like, what's up there right now is, is a PDF, and you cannot zoom in. So...
There's three district, there's a district view of the map. I don't, no, it's not interactive, that's correct.
Right, I mean, I'm just saying the level of detail. I just, thank you very much. It looks to me, and I can't be certain of it, it looks to me like the division of this particular HOA is a division of precincts. So, back to, like, the original, first of all, I would like to say, we all know, these cannot be perfect for everyone, right? We're trying to make them as perfect as possible. It looks to me, on David's phone, thank you, that the division line, as we can discern it here in this PDF, is a breakout of precincts, I do believe. So, that makes it certainly more understandable. I, I think, again, my comment, again, is just, we're kind of flying blind here, and that, that wasn't a good way to go about this.
Any other questions or comments for council?
I was going to make a comment, you know, my, my, where I live is, is Windermere, and actually, Boeckhoff is, is a byline. Pete has one side of Windermere, I have, from a practical perspective, people from Windermere come to me because I live in the neighborhood, and they know who to reach out to. So, having HOA split up, I think, could actually be an opportunity to be, have another council member advocate for that HOA in a much more effective manner, if you need that. But it's, it's never been a problem in Windermere, and we've got over four hundred residents there, so, not been a problem.
It actually can be an advantage, because you need five council, well, there's nine of us up here, you need five council members to agree on something, to pass it. So now you have two for the HOA, plus the three of us that are at-large. You have five there, that if you have issues within your HOA, that you, you want to get something done, there's at least five right there that better be listening very clearly. Anybody else with questions or comments? All right, so we have a motion by Pete and a second by Selena. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to item twenty-two, one zero one zero two two B, an ordinance of the common council for the city of Fishers amending Chapter one seventy of the City of Fishers Code of Ordinances for Retail Food Establishments as a first reading.
Good evening, council. Monica Health, Public Health Director, for the record. So you have before you the proposed ordinance amendment that would begin the process of sanitary grading scale, as we've discussed previously in a work session. So just to give you a little bit of background on the introduction of the sanitary grading system, the initial goals of the FHD food system, our food program, included an education-based approach with our operators. Since starting the Health Department, it was noted that many establishments reported not having been inspected with any regularity, and in some cases, in a couple of years. We have a goal of making sure that we have an increased transparency to residents. Our inspection reports currently are available online, they are a little bit difficult to get to, and the inspection reports themselves are a little bit tricky to wade through and fully understand what that inspection result means to you and your ability to safely eat in establishment. So, those were some of the goals of establishing a sanitary grading scale. In addition, evidence shows, from a public health standpoint, that sanitary grading scales actually do improve sanitation measures in establishments, which is always the goal. We want to know that we're doing these things for a purpose that is consistent with public health. So in part of our development process for this sanitary grading scale proposal, we reviewed many other jurisdictions, processes, and policies that have a sanitary grading scale in place. We also have been enrolled for the past year in the FDA Voluntary Retail Standards Program, which emphasizes a focus on activities that best protect food safety and prevention of foodborne illness. So we really are putting a focus on public health where it matters most, not just on being nitpicky over every item that has less importance to actually maintaining public health standards. We also discussed our proposals with other officials and other jurisdictions that have recently implemented a sanitary grading scale, so that we could learn from them on what went well, what didn't go so well, what they would have done differently if they had the chance to do this over, and we took a lot of those suggestions as well. We've done a crosswalk of the Indiana Administrative Code, which, by the way, was last updated in two thousand and four when it comes to restaurant inspection, so there is nothing new that we are doing in the inspection. The actual inspection being done will stay the same as it has under Indiana Administrative Code since two thousand and four. The only different thing that we are proposing here is that we assign points to each of those items, those points are weighted, they equal up to a hundred, and then we put a grading scale to it. So we've done a crosswalk of how those administrative, the Administrative Code from Indiana, that, again, has been in place since two thousand and four, matches the FDA standards, so that we have an emphasis on public health and how that weights the scale that we're proposing for the sanitary grading scale. We have drafted a policy and process, which you have for review, for incorporation by reference, I believe, as part of the ordinance. We've had some ongoing discussions with operators throughout the last quite a few months that we've been in development with this. Our inspectors have been discussing with operators as they inspect things, that this may be possibly coming, and that here's what we're working through. We've also, as of August ninth, reviewed with the Health Board and incorporated there, and put out the last public health meeting. On August fifteenth, we presented to you all at a work session, and then on August thirtieth and September thirteenth, we hold, we held some online question-and-answer sessions and presented to retail operators. We had probably eighty to a hundred participated in the two sessions together. We had very few questions, just a few logistical questions, no serious concerns. We offered our email addresses, phone numbers, multiple ways to contact us with further concerns or questions. Nobody today has reached out to me with any of those concerns or questions. And then, of course, we're bringing the first reading to you today at City Council. Let's see, on the website, prior to the August thirtieth webinar, the first of the two webinars we held with the operators, we did post the, the grading scale crosswalk with the Indiana Administrative Code. We also recommended that anyone could use this to do their own self-inspection, to prepare for this, and that was well-received. We also have the proposed ordinance and the policy and process documents for review, both on our website, and they were also sent with all of the invitations. In order to invite the operators to participate, we did, we pulled it out of our inspection database, and basically invited anybody that had an active permit from us in the previous twelve months. We're still working on a couple of logistics related to implementation. For example, we're developing an interactive dashboard where it can be a little bit easier on a map, you can look up your favorite restaurant, see the most recent inspection, and eventually the letter grade, so that that process will be easier. We're, you know, redoing our inspection report to match this, so that's still in development. We're still in development on the placards, that would need to be posted, and of course, we would like to develop a process to celebrate any facilities that have extraordinary compliance with the available Administrative Code. But all of these are basically waiting on your approval of this, moving forward of the ordinance. I'll be answering any questions.
Yeah, before we have a call for first reading, anybody have any questions or comments?
When is the mayor going to get your building done?
She reminds me often.
The current one?
The current one, she, yeah, we're working on it.
Anybody else?
Monica, I have a question. Do we need to be mindful of the county health department's grading scale or, or differences there between the two? Is that something that we need to take into consideration, or...
No, I mean, we, we don't have overlapping jurisdiction, except when it comes to mobile establishments that may operate in more than one jurisdiction. We all, again, operate off of the Indiana Administrative Code as far as what the inspection entails, and that's consistent across the state. Okay, good. Mm-hmm.
Anyone else?
I have first reading.
First reading, thank you very much. Moving on to item twenty-three, zero nine one nine two two D, consideration of a text amendment to the city of Fishers Unified Development Ordinance sign standards.
Yes, Megan Bugisich, Director of Planning and Zoning. So this is final reading on a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance temporary sign standards. This is just to ensure that we're in compliance with all federal and state legislation.
Okay, a motion to approve. Motion by Pete.
Second.
Second by John. Open up for questions or comments.
Yeah, just, it's a yearly comment with me. We have an ordinance that says no signs in the right-of-way, and at least in the Northeast District, we're not enforcing it. The labor to enforce on it really is ridiculous, that we have to supply the labor to enforce the ordinance. It's not being followed. It amazes me that a candidate will run for an office but break the law. It really amazes me, and it tells me something about that candidate that doesn't think the law applies to them. Instead of fighting this, the seven years that I've been on this council, and many years in another city, why don't we just get rid of that part of the ordinance and let them put the signs where they want to?
Is that, is that the men, are you...
Well, I think it's probably a broader conversation, obviously, we need to control what's in the right-of-way. I'm Jason, I'm sure you're having heart palpitations over there.
I would also, I would also just add a comment. The sign regulation, especially with respect to political signs, has been a litigious topic over the last couple of years, and it was probably about two or three years ago that this council, for those who were on this council, may remember that all communities in Hamilton County decided to adopt similar ordinances with respect to their right-of-way enforcement, so that we didn't have a hodgepodge of different political subdivisions enforcing different actions with respect to political signs. You always want to avoid discriminatory, discriminatory actions, and when you make blanket exceptions for the right-of-way, saying that the right-of-way signs have to not be included in the ordinance, it's a, it's a safe haven for you to be in. So, if we would want to change that, we would need to have a further conversation, what that would look like.
I, I think, Brad, a lot of times, it's just, people don't understand what right-of-way is. I see it on social media all the time, they don't understand what right-of-way is, they don't, maybe some kind of information on our website or something.
I think, city, I'm sorry, that's no excuse. The candidate controls his signs, period. If he can't control his signs, don't run for the office.
I think we can continue to try to step up enforcement. It is difficult when, you know, and I'm sure, I'm sure you've seen this, Councilmember Dreamer, one night they're not there, the next morning someone has plastered signs literally everywhere, and it's just a matter of whether staff can get out there and remove them. And then proverbially, what always happens is that we get accused of stealing signs for, for the purposes of, you know, helping one candidate or the other. And so, what we could probably do is provide you guys some stats on signs pulled a date, just so you have an idea of what we're dealing with, and then I'll have a conversation with Succi about, is there more that we can do? Can we enlist our public works guys to really get after it and try to step up enforcement? Can we enlist our public works guys to really get after it and try to step up enforcement?
But, but the public, people really don't know. I mean, the candidate may know, but sometimes supporters, just residents in general, when you ask somebody, what's right-of-way? You ask a person down the street, they don't know what that is. They don't understand it. They just, so I think having more clarity and more information or educational information so that people would know exactly what it means would help.
Yeah, and every property is different on where that right-of-way line is, but if someone does have a question on where that, where that line is, they can always contact the planning and zoning staff at planning@fishers.in.us, and we can provide that clarification.
I think it's also important to note, I think typically, Megan, we send out a letter to all the candidates every year.
That's what I was going to add, that, that is really valuable and very nice, that letter, that explains what a right-of-way is, and I thought that was a very important educational component. That was good.
Do, do we have an amendment or not, or is this just a conversation?
I think it's a broad comment that we can do.
Okay, okay. Anyone else, questions or comments? All right, we got a motion by Pete, a second by John. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Moving on to item 24-081522A, consideration of rezone.
Yes, so this is a proposed PUD ordinance for a new development that includes 53 for-sale residential townhome units. So I've got up here on the left is the location map, so it is just to the east of State Road 37, just south there of 141st. And then here's the proposed concept plan. So like I mentioned, it's 53 townhome units. They have worked, this is a Lennar product, and they've worked well with staff to redesign the concept plan to have the units be rear-loaded, and so most of the units are going to face bent grass lane, and then these are going to be alley-loaded, and so that really allows to just have higher-quality architecture without having to have that garage on the front facade. And so these have been reviewed and approved by the PUD committee. This went to Plan Commission last week and got a unanimous favorable recommendation. We do have Lennar here to speak, and then also Steve Harden with Fragery Drinker, but staff does recommend approval on this project, and I'll invite the petitioner up to add any additional comments.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden, I'm a partner-in-law from Fragery Drinker. Tony Bogato from Lennar is here as well. Megan did a great job explaining the project. We were here for first reading some time ago. There was also, we just would add, there was no remonstrance for the project at the Plan Commission where it received a unanimous favorable recommendation, so we'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, we respectfully request your approval tonight.
All right. We have a motion. Motion by Pete, or a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. Open up for questions or comments. Just a reminder that a couple of years ago, I don't remember when this was, but there was a, there was a potential for apartments to go right there, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the narrative that I hear a lot is, we just approve apartments, 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 and that's all we ever do, and we're rubber stampers because these things don't get reported. They don't get reported when we say no to something. The only things that go on the news or social media is when we say yes to stuff. And there was a firm no to this because we believed there was something better that could happen in that area, and now there's a for-sale product going in a few years later. So whenever you hear that narrative, whenever you see that, just understand there is a reality of things and there's a fiction to stuff. So that's just my, my little stump today. We have a motion by Pete, a second by Selena. All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Moving, moving on to item 25-10122D, request to approve Sunbeam PUD, first reading.
Yes, so this is first reading for another rezone item, and what I've highlighted here is the properties that would be subject to this new PUD ordinance. There is remainder land that surrounds the Fishers District expansion that we've talked about last month and then at tonight's meeting, and so really just to expand on that development, we would propose rezoning these parcels to be an additional expansion to the yard and the commons at Fishers District. So this PUD ordinance does mimic those development standards that are within those existing PUDs, and this would come back before you all next month for final reading.
So just a broader context here, I think this is a really encouraging development on the part of Sunbeam, that they are voluntarily saying, we like what is happening with all the other development around there. Will you go ahead and zone us with the same restrictions as we have on this? So if you remember back in the day, we had a lot of back and forth with Sunbeam about, leave this broadly developable and the big box and all these other things, and now they're, they've seen kind of what the yard and what the developments are that we're doing, and they're saying, hey, we'd like to do the same level or higher-quality development. So I think this is a really positive step forward in our relationship with Sunbeam moving forward.
I like the higher-quality portion of that, not that what we have is a low quality.
No.
I think it's very high quality, but taking it higher.
Yeah, for, for more restrictions on uses and more intentional pedestrian connectivity, all those types of requirements, I think that's all a positive step forward.
Before we have a call for first reading, anyone have any questions or comments?
First reading.
First reading, thank you. All right, moving on to community comments. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Council. My name is Michael Colby. I live at 7105 Cold Lake Drive here in Fishers. Based upon what I perceive is happening, I'm not anticipating any response to my questions tonight, and that's kind of my point. I'm questioning what constitutes a public hearing? We had the, the meeting, special meeting, and there were a series of questions that I asked. I was told that that would be something that would be answered at the, at this council meeting, and it did not happen. I happen to have copies of the responses, advised by my, our, probably council members. As a matter of record, should not my questions have been addressed tonight to go into the record? Now, I may be off, you know, I think it's a departure from what you've done in the past. I've sat up there, and I know that when we were town council and we had second readings, we opened it to public input, and I know that's a policy decision. But typically, when you go to a Plan Commission, BZA, or even a City Council, and there's a public hearing, you come and ask a question, and if there's an answer available, that information is provided. Now, obviously, in some zoning, you may have to go back and do some research, and I understand that. So I see what you've been doing as a departure from the practice. Now, that may be a policy issue, I just need to know that, or is there some, something in the state statutes that defines what a public hearing is and when it should occur? So that's kind of a global question that I have.
Mike, I think that's a fair point. I normally won't interact with this, but I think that's a fair point, and I thought all of those were answered here, so I might have missed it. Can you go, there were, there were three questions you had from the other night.
Yes.
The first one was regarding, if my notes are correct, was regarding to whether this was funding two buildings, an arena and a rec center.
Yeah, all, all my questions were addressed, but there are people might be here tonight that saw the meeting online and came tonight to hear the reply, and they may or may not know that it's out on the web, and to be frank with you, your web's not very friendly. So trying to find something out there is difficult. So I, I may be stepping on policy questions, but I'm kind of curious, is there some statute that governs what constitutes a public hearing and what citizens can expect? Another, another point was, I want to go back to the readings. I saw a lot of second readings tonight, and they were approved. In the past, you've had one, two, and three readings, because typically, if you approve it on second reading, you suspend the rules, and if there's an individual within the council that objects to that, you don't have the third reading. So have you eliminated third readings? Question, you know, and I have tried to come, I've tried to come to as many council meetings as I can, may have missed it, I don't know. So that's, that's a question. Item 18, we heard was some funding 5.7 million dollars to go into road construction based upon a list. Where's that list? I've asked for that many, 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 many times, and I understand when you have a bad winter, if you're number one on the list, you may drop down to eight, and if you're number 15, you may go to one. I'd just like to see if a citizen can have access to that list, where is that 5.5 million dollars going to be spent? And then finally, and I don't mean this as a, as a negative, but I heard council say, when Councilwoman there asked about putting a sunset on the food and beverage ordinance, I heard council say, there's a pledge. We make a pledge that that's going to happen, and that's wonderful. Where is that pledge written, and is it binding? So, you know, and I'm not trying to be negative, Chris, you know, it's wonderful you make the pledge. Do you have the authority to make the pledge? Does a pledge, you have to come up from up here, and how is that captured?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close.
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
I'm just being shy.
Okay.
Try to be brief. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Rick Witton. My address is 9865 Brookwood Drive.
Yeah, get right there, just so people can hear you online.
Rick Witton, 9865 Brookwood Drive, McCorrisville, I'm Fishers. Just wanted to report that it's great that we're having a lot of expansion, putting a lot of bonds toward a lot of different things to make the city better. One of the things that we probably need to look at is looking back and making sure we're taking care of what we own instead of always growing. One of the, one of the problems I run into is trailway hazards. I live near Bee Camp Creek. We have several crossovers that have flooded and the asphalt's crumbling, and I've dealt with different departments. I get cut to a point where I think, well, let's just see what we can do at the council. So there is a danger of people falling into the creek, little kids there, some are narrow, and there's not a lot of passageway, and then there's some that you don't know, but there's like a 50-foot drop-off in some of the embankments. So I guess there's never been a maintenance agreement. When we get these pathways put in through the developers, there's really no follow-up. And so we're building and building, but really not maintaining, and I think the problem really evolves around miscommunication, because the HOA's think, well, it's not our job because the city's got it on our pathway map. So they're getting all the benefit from marketing, but the neighborhoods have to maintain it, except for Ambria. I live in the PUD with, between 96th Street and 104th, and the Oreo in Georgia. So there's only one that I know of, one path that the city owns, and that's Ambria. I don't know how that happened. Maybe it was just sent over to the city, but we'll see that path maintained, and then the other's not. So anyway, I don't know how we can fix that, but my, my philosophy is, let's not wait till a kid dies, and we have the news media down there wondering what's going on, why did it happen? I just think that's a, that's a problem.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir.
I'll touch base with you, sir, after the meeting about Bee, it's Bee Camp Creek Trail specifically. I can talk, talk with you afterwards.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Debbie Ayers, 7255 Pembroke Circle in River Glen. This isn't a big deal. I apologize for disrupting your meeting, but there were several of us over at the municipal building, because I was mailed this, and it was never said anywhere on here that this meeting was here. Fortunately, the janitor was able to help me. So maybe in the future, put where the location is.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak, step forward and state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Can I be able to speak more than once?
You're absolutely welcome. You can come up here, you'll have three minutes to speak, sir.
As I've stated before, my name's Carl Everett. I live at 9,006 Glass Timmy Lane in Lantern Pines. Three areas have been consistent throughout this meeting and other meetings that I've attended in the past. If a business is viable and wishes to locate in this city, why should we as taxpayers give them tax breaks? Property owners don't get tax breaks, that's my first point. Second point is infrastructure. If you're going to pull in all these people to this arena, based on what I've seen of USA Parkway, it's not going to work too well. What's going to end up happening, you're going to pull all these people to the south, to 106th Street, because it's, it's going to be a bottleneck up there. Has there been anything directed towards infrastructure improvements? And I don't mean access points, I'm talking about main line. From 116th Street, you know well enough, everybody in this room knows how this, how USA Parkway winds around, and you have an event where you have 5,500 people at an event, whether it's hockey, a concert, or whatever, you're going to have a major traffic jam on your hands. And the third point is what this gentleman just said a little while ago. If there's second readings and you already agreed to it, then there is no need for a third reading. I thought the process is having three readings. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak.
I have a comment, if there's no one else.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and close the community comment. You can go ahead.
Okay. All right, so we're nearing the end of Hispanic Heritage Month, and I wanted to acknowledge, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Fadness, that Cecilia Cobal is the first Latina on Fisher City Council.
To my knowledge, that is correct.
All right. I'll, I'll try to not be so emotional, but she did speak to my community at some point about being a Latina in government, and there were several others there, but she made me feel like I could do this, so I feel very honored that I get to sit next to her. So I just want to acknowledge that for my part.
Well done. Well, and we look forward to having breakfast Wednesday morning. We're having breakfast with Hispanic-owned companies here in Fishers, so very excited about that as well, and you two, I believe, are co-chairing that, if I'm not mistaken. So we look forward to having there.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
A bipartisan moment right there.
That's very kind, yes, you know, I am always a person that wants to, you know, encourage people to, to get involved, and, and I think, you know, it's, this is, this is a government for the people, by the people, of the people, and, and so when people are wondering, you know, how, how can I get involved or be part of the democratic process, I always am there to lend advice and mentor, and it's been a pleasure serving with you.
Yeah, as we say, "Ces de puede," so we, yes, we can.
That's great. All right, anything else?
One, I thought you were the one that sat next to me. Tony and Steve, if you don't mind, I'm getting a lot of emails from Britton Falls on your project of 169 and 136. They want to know about sound barriers. Are sound barriers going to be installed up there on I-69 for all these residents? They're being, I'm being asked. So since you were here, I thought I'd take advantage of you being here.
So you're referring to Abbott Commons that was approved recently at 136? There's no plans for sound barriers, and that's usually regulated by the state when they come in to do road widening projects. So when you build next to an interstate that's already there, those homeowners know what they're buying next to, and there's no requirement for that, and there's no anticipation.
And I think if I remember correctly, Tony, we worked to put some green space and trail and all that in anticipation of it not being done, but if they ever widen 69, then you would probably anticipate a.
Okay, so the answer is no, that we know sound barriers.
Correct, that's correct.
Correct, but there was going to be mounding and landscaping next to a trail.
Yeah. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? You have a second? All right, we're adjourned, thank you very much, have a good night.